I am going to call to order the Middleton Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. It is 7:05 PM.
5:05.
Sorry, 5:05. Thank you, Jackie. I might get my old seven o'clock brain here. Just a reminder for those that are in the room, this meeting is being recorded. So first on the agenda is warrant 2609 plus Facilities Project Warrant Number 73. Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Warrant 2609 dated October 30th, 2025 comes in a total of about $915,000 on the payroll side of things, $4,300 of that is for the Public Health Excellence Grant. And you'll also notice some overtime for MEL, the Fire Department and the Police Department sliding down to bills payable at about $875,000. A couple of things of note here, $13,000 for gravestone repairs, that's CPC funds for some of our historic markers in town. They go through and prop them back up or piece them back together. We do a handful of them a year. And Paul coordinates that, Paul Goodwin, so thank you. For IT, you'll see our assessment for IT services for October and the amount of $5,300 and also the North Shore IT Regional Base Assessment for fiscal '26 and the amount of $5,600. For police, some resources down there relative to executive management training. And then sliding down for the school, about $42,000 for the Fuller Meadow Roof. There'll be an update on that project later on in the agenda, but there was one payment made towards that. For Facilities Project 73, you'll see construction heavy warrant coming in at about $2.2 million, a majority of which, vast majority of which is actual construction dollars. At any given moment, I think at the high point, they had about 100 people working on site.
Parking lot's been jammed.
Yeah, and that's just the one on the street. The one behind the town hall is also pretty full. And then smaller, $4,000 or so quantity and change for design and miscellaneous costs, just reworking some little things as we come into the final approach.
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to accept this presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we have minutes for October 16th Executive Session, October 20-
No, we don't.
We do not, that's right. We do not have executive session. So we have October 21st, open session, and then as well as Executive Sessions 1 and 2.
Move to accept this presented.
There is a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed if any? That passes unanimously. Justin, Town Administrator, report an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things around town. I've been collaborating with our conservation agent, Chris and Ken, to start developing a scope of work for the open space and rec plan. That's something that the town funded, went through the budget process. It was funded as part of the capital process, and so we anticipate having something in place in terms of an RFP probably sometime in early 2026, late January, early February, with the intent of the study itself taking place in the spring and summer with a deliverable to come sometime in the fall. The study, I mean beyond report writing and everything else, it requires a lot of solicitation of feedback from the community. So there'll be, you know, you'll see surveys go out and things like that. When the time comes, we'll rely on our boards and committees to help kind of push it out to their neighbors, and you want to get as much of a robust feedback as you possibly can ultimately get a better report for it. So the ball's rolling on that. Our Finance Department has been working to get ahead of the move to the new building. So thank you to Sharon Bainbridge, who earlier sent out a correspondence just coordinating for the sending of a change of address letters that are going to go out to the various vendors that we have on our rolls, just to let them know proactively, hey, we're moving, please send them to this address on this effective date coming down the road. So thank you for coordinating that effort. I've been finalizing an updated RFP for the wrecker contract in town.
For the what contract?
Towing services.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes. So it's been some time. Typically, as a best practice, we should probably be doing smaller contracts like that every three years or so. I want to get in the practice of doing that. So we'll be refreshing that, probably going out sometime in late November and having it set up to take place or take effect for the new year sometime in January. The legislature has returned our charter changes after reviewing it from annual town meeting with the request to clarify a couple of lines. I'd send the correspondence on to the board, so a suggested remedy will be brought forward at your next select board meeting on November 18th, minor clarification items.
And that's a vote that this board can take, nothing that town meeting is required?
That is correct. Assistant Town Administrator Bresnahan has returned from the annual ICAMA conference, sporting a good tan. So as always, I just want to reiterate how much we appreciate the commitment this community has for professional development, and the fact that you make that investment in us is very much appreciated. So thank you. Following direction from your last meeting, Treasurer Federico, Finance Director Wood and I met with a vendor to establish payment cards in town. So I'm happy to report we will have one card stood up to carry us through the rest of this fiscal year so that we can take care of those handful of items that just have to be paid on a card. And then we're going to take that experience, see how that one card goes, and potentially roll it out to all department heads or something equivalent to that for fiscal year '27 to kick off in July, but really use the next six months as a little bit of a sandbox period to get to better understand of the program and everything else.
Great. Thank you very much for that moving quickly.
Sure. I joined my counterparts in Boxer and Topfield today at Masco to discuss budgetary constraints and other bumps that we see coming down the road with Superintendent Harvey. It was a good line of sight for both operating budget limitations, but also trying to get a good grasp on where they are with some of the larger capital items, but also growing list of midsize capital items that I think, you know, all together are going to kind of start stacking up pretty quickly.
Do we know what their potential schedule looks like for the big capital effort?
Yep, so coming up later on in the agenda, we'll touch on that a little bit as well, the roof project and heat pumps and everything else. We can talk a little bit about that as well, some good news there. And then I met with other local communities last week as part of the North Shore Coalition, a good group of managers and some planners, and we discussed several crucial regional topics, PFAS things that are upcoming, coming down the road that we all seem to be tackling, and we'll be discussing this evening, 3A zoning and some of the challenges that other communities continue to have with that, and a few other topics as well. But it's always good to kind of get us all in the same room and you get a good idea for the fact that a lot of us are kind of tackling some of the same problems. And it's nice to be able to exchange notes from time to time, so we appreciate their partnership. And that's everything for now.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Have we been working on developing a new snow parking ban policy?
Honestly, I'm going to have to look at my notes and try to remember where we left off on that because I haven't reviewed it in some time.
Didn't we, last year, we didn't have, we did away with it, right?
I thought we had come to a conclusion, but I don't remember what it was.
Well, you know, we had sort of a blanket, no parking-
Yeah, we used to have a process of from this date to this date, no parking period, regardless of the weather.
And that we got rid of.
Right.
But we haven't really replaced it with anything, and I'm not sure that we ever decided that we don't need to replace it with anything.
So I would say the only thing that we will need is during times, I'm looking at our Public Works Director, during times that snow is on the ground and they're clearing the roads, I want them and the police to have the authority to make sure that the road is accessible, i.e. if folks are parking during a storm and your folks are having to plow around them or they're parked in a parking lot that they shouldn't be at. I wanted to make sure that we have processes in place that EPW speaks to the police, they're either tagged or towed if need be. So I don't want you guys having to come back the next day to clean around when that vehicle's been moved.
We need a trigger for that. What triggers that?
Yeah, exactly.
Let me go back and watch the tape because I feel like it was about this time last year, and it's not as fresh in my mind as it should be. So I'll go back, look into it, and I'll report back to all you.
This better not mean we're getting snow early, Costa, so that's-
May have jinxed us, but-
Because I did see on the finance report, it did say zero for snow. I mean, you shouldn't even be putting that on now.
Attempting fee.
Justin, can you keep me in the loop with that so I kind of know what's going on?
Sure. Great, best.
Okay.
Well, one other short thing. I attended the school committee last night. They, Steve Greenberg, sort of presented the, what's called Draft 1 of the budget, you know, which really was a comparison of what you can spend at the two and a half guideline as opposed to a level service. There is a gap there, and the detail, more detailed budget is going to be presented at their December meeting. One of the committee members asked Steve, will that presentation be based on the two and a half guideline? And he said, yes. And then the school committee will see what that program looks like at that number, and then if they think it's an acceptable level of service, basically their budget is done. If they think that it needs to be enhanced, then they'll debate what it is, knowing that whatever that number is, is likely to be on an override.
Did they talk about when there would be, was there any discussion about timing and of when their budget would be tied up? You know, because that was the issue last year, is their budget was the last in-
Yeah, I mean, they spoke informally after the meeting to some of the committee members, and they were really would like to have it in the first Saturday of February. And given, I think that's possible except for their health insurance line because we don't have-
But that's across the board. I mean, again, I'm calling him out because he's sitting here, but I'm looking at our Public Works Director.
Yes, but the health insurance is not in his budget.
No, but we, we expect our department heads to have a budget done and submitted by a certain date. They're a department of the town. I understand that the health insurance is a different issue, and we may not have clarity in February. I think the health insurance is going to be painful this year. We're not going to have clarity in February, but that doesn't mean they can't have a budget based on whatever decisions we're making at the time of a understanding of what we think health insurance will be.
Well, the committee members I spoke to were, didn't see a reason not to be, have pretty much wrapped up by February.
Good, good.
Can we have an ask? Can we give them a guidance of what we think health insurance, the percentage will be? Do we have any guidance?
They're using 20%, just like-
Okay.
It's what I would carry for the year. It's going to be ugly, boys and girls. Okay. Anything else, Costa? Anybody else? Okay, Middleton Municipal Campus update.
Complex.
This campus here.
I know, but we both-
It is complex.
I do as, I read as I'm told.
So I just wanted to communicate some exciting news. We have an anticipated opening date of Monday, March 2nd, 2025. I think we're comfortably close enough in the schedule that we can communicate that. I do want to stress, anticipated and obviously-
Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six, excuse me. Anything, I also read what is written. Anything could happen, you know, between now and then. We hope not, but given where we are, I think we're in a good place. So we'll hold that date. We're going to try to coordinate a move based on that date with the understanding that it may, you know, flex a week or two in one direction or another.
Are we opening like the town hall in phases? Like I assume we're going to keep for a short period of time some presence at the old facility, or are we literally shutting the lights off, locking the door, and moving over?
So there, there's some overlap there, which I think makes our move a little bit easier. It's not like a situation where, you know, you sold your house and you're trying to get out of it, get everything in the moving truck, and you're getting into your other house in the same day. So we are going to try to stand up as much as possible. There are some IT considerations that are going to be happening largely in February for what they can pre-plan, and then there are some tech elements that are going to have to move to, yeah, that may require us shutting down that Friday prior.
Yeah.
Something like that, but it should be pretty smooth. And then in terms of getting a lot of the files over, we endeavor to have them over for March 2nd, but if for whatever reason they have to trickle over over the course of that week, that wouldn't be too much of an issue.
I would recommend the Friday before. I know you close at 12, 1 o'clock anyway. I would have Memorial Hall closed to the public on Friday so, you know, staff can focus on the last couple of pieces of pack up and so forth. It would just be less hectic for everybody involved. I mean, let's view it as a snow day.
Yeah.
See, I know, so you are, you brought it up, Costa.
A lot of jinxing.
And then public safety is obviously a little bit of a different dynamic. They never close, so we'll be meeting shortly to kind of talk about how that's, you know, going to-
They'll just park at a different lot at the end.
Yeah, you know, in so many words. So, but there's a date on the calendar. That's, that's fairly exciting, so can keep moving forward with that. And then also, I just wanted to touch on again, for department heads, boards and committees, we'd like to get you all into the building one more time before it's done, done, and we anticipate that's going to be sometime in mid to late November. So I'd say later in this week, we'll be sending an email, communicating and trying to coordinate some times that are available.
Has there been any thought about an open house? Because, I mean, there will be some parts of police and fire that won't be open to the public unless you're coming in in a cruiser and going into a small cell, but, you know, an opportunity for the public to actually come in and tour these and see these facilities.
So we've talked about that a little bit. There's some logistic elements that we have to consider. So for example, we can't open it to groups in a large scale like that until the building's officially signed over, if things get scuffed or damaged or whatever. So we're working out that timeline with the contractor, and I think when we have a more definitive date, we would like to get it opened up for the community to, you know, get a walkthrough into areas that are appropriate for public safety, and then the same for the town hall, Community Center.
Be a lot of folks wanting to pay their bills in person for a while.
Something to be said for waiting until the weather's a little nicer too.
Yeah, no, I agree. Oh, I wasn't saying within the first couple of weeks, I was saying like, is this a mayor of June open house, like?
Yeah, I think what we have discussed, the date is a small ceremony acknowledging the move, you know, something that can be held in the lobby inside, and then having a larger community. And I have nothing else on that topic.
So you said department heads, boards, and committee tours sometime late November?
Yep, and we'll send out dates once we confirm with the OPM team when they're available to walk us through.
Okay. When, you know, leading up to that march, when will we see a lot less activity over there? Like, I know there, you know, one of the big things that'll be done right at the end is kind of the final grading pieces, and some of that'll probably have to get buttoned up in the spring for grass and so forth, but when will the parking lots start to look empty?
Honestly, they're probably going to go right up to the-
March 1st?
Yeah, if I, if I, you know, based on what I've seen in past building projects, I mean, it's, they've already started scaling back their workforce there a little bit based off its high watermark, but when they're trying to wrap up punch list items and everything else in the last month, it's still going to be pretty busy there. I wouldn't be surprised. So the parking lot at the front obviously is a little bit of a different situation because they officially tore that surface up about a month, month and a half ago now. They're, a bulk of them are parking in the back. And then as you touched upon, come spring, there's, especially with the regrading element kind of coming in late in the game, which I, you know, I appreciate Bill Reno caught that. I wouldn't be surprised, like seeing them working well, you know, through the spring in terms of site work things up front. The buildings themselves, though, they're, they're going to be pretty much out of there.
But we agreed, final paving isn't happening until after move-in.
Yeah, we don't want them to kind of mess everything up.
So when do our staff start maintaining and, I guess this is the night to talk about snow, plowing and site like that. Is that going to be after March 2nd or after final pavement?
It'd be March, like March 2nd. Realistically, February, in an ideal world, a bulk of that is going to be FF and E, so furniture fixtures and then technology elements. There shouldn't be much like construction work still happening in February, but I'm sure there'll still be someone running, you know, here, there for, you know, crack-
Punch list.
Plate or whatever, yeah.
So what about plowing in February?
I assume not until it's turned over to-
Yeah, not until it's officially turned over.
If they're contracted, they're not obligated to plow the whole parking lot. So on March 1st, if there's snow that never got plowed in February, what happens then? Because they're not obligated to plow everything, just what they need, right?
You'd have to talk to them because any snow left like that might not be as simple as just plowing.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that time of year kind of tends to turn into a sludge hell, but we'll nail that down, that coordination with them, but they typically would own having to do like a full cleaning and salving of it for liability purposes. They wouldn't want to leave it a mess.
And all of our new facilities person coming onboard December 1st, so that's going to be part of his portfolio of coordination as well.
Okay.
Do we have enough equipment for, I assume that complex is going to have a single piece that'll be there for a bulk of that storm?
Not earmarked right now. You're killing me with all the snow talk.
I know, well, let's get it out. Let's just get it off, like rip the Band-Aid off.
I can feel the anxiety coming from the audience. No, no, but that facility director will have a pickup truck, so, so that will keep it open until the storm stops, and then we can do without a stuff.
Give them a truck and a shovel and say good luck.
Pretty much. Maybe a snow blower, maybe.
I've got an extra one if you need it.
A flamethrower, that would melt the snow.
Okay, good. Anything else on the municipal complex update?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Middleton Social Services Advisory Group.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is just coming out of the conversation that you all had at your last meeting that ran pretty long, but it was a good use of time, and I think we kind of, kind of laid out a lot of, I guess in so many words, framed out some good opportunities in town to try to help people that need help, and I think taking a hard look at the resources we currently have available and how we're using them. And I think some of those, those groups that presently exist are in periods of transition themselves right now, so it's a good opportunity to kind of take stock of, of what we're doing. So as part of that, I had some conversations with some of the players in town and some of those groups, you know, Eileen Twist and Jillian Smith down at the Council on Aging, and talking about trying to get a group together of those main players that provide social services and talking about, you know, what they provide, what areas our organizations might overlap and kind of waste resources, and what areas where there are gaps in between what we provide and how we can fill those gaps. So we'd like to get this standing advisory group going, meeting on a monthly basis, and then through me reporting back to the select board if there's anything of note, but just trying to be more robust in how we support neighbors that, and members of the community that need assistance in one form or another. So I just wanted to give you an update that the, the wheels are kind of turning on that. We're going to get the groups together that I had listed, I think in draft form anyway, we were talking about Council on Aging, Veteran Services, my office representing the Mansfield Fund, the Assessor's Office, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Housing Authority, Middleton Food Pantry, and Neighbors in Need as a starting point anyway, seems like a good cross-section, and we'll go from there. So I'll let you know how that first meeting goes. We haven't scheduled it just yet.
You know, it's, if the advisory group can not only look at coordinating the aid, but coordinating the identification of people that need aid, because there's in different segments of those groups that you mentioned, they have identified different people, you know, but I'm not, you know, it's, the information is to who is being helped by who, what group isn't necessarily known to other groups, so, so it's coordinating the people that need and the aid that's provided so that you avoid, you know, try to avoid gaps and overlaps.
And I know next on the agenda is the Food Pantry Voucher and SNAP benefits, but if there's anything we've learned over the last week or two of a much wider conversation around SNAP benefits and looking at the number of individuals that have been, you know, I've seen some reports of the number of individuals by town that are receiving SNAP benefits, and it's a much larger number than we've been supporting, for example, in the Mansfield Fund for the last several years. So there's, there's a lot more need out there than we've been able to fulfill, which means to our point cluster of identifying and, you know, there are different braided sources of funding and programs available, including some by the town, some outside of the town, some of them 501(c)(3)'s and others, I think. This advisory group is a really good effort to actually figure out how we can make sure that folks aren't falling through the crack.
Yeah, the other, you know, when you mentioned about SNAP, Channel 5's, you know, website, you know, had a feature that you could look at by town, how many people were, and I think Middleton's number was in the mid 300s.
I thought it was, what was it?
368.
I thought it was 468, okay.
So it's a good time to have this.
I agree.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Perfect segue to the next topic, which is Food Pantry Voucher Discussion on the SNAP benefit. So this is normally the time of the year where this board is approving vouchers. So the Mansfield Fund of supporting individuals going into the Thanksgiving season, and then secondarily, a similar effort will happen going into the holiday season, both for food need as well as heating utility needs. I'd like this board to consider for the Food Pantry Voucher Discussion where we've normally provided a $100 voucher given, and using the Mansfield Fund, between the Mansfield Fund and the work that's been going on between the Food Pantry and the dollars that are in a dedicated fund right now, I'd like this board to approve that to a number of $250, given what's going on with SNAP benefits right now. It's not that folks have taken a cut. That benefit evaporated on Thursday, on Saturday morning. So I always say there's a role for government. This is a perfect example of where local government leans in when folks at the federal and/or state can't seem to get their you-know-what together, so. And I know that the work that you've been doing with the new 501(c)(3) for the Food Pantry, the funds are here to do this in addition to the Mansfield Fund.
I'll move to make the vouchers this year $250.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So how do people, like if more, more people right now need this because of the situation with the SNAP, so how can they access it?
Yeah, I was, I was going to bring that up as well.
And are we better, like if we have a certain amount of dollars, are we better off to give it to more people? If there's more people that need it, should we be going that direction of more people rather than more dollars to the people already on the list?
So, I mean, we've been doing a $100 voucher for, since I've been on the board, that's been the number. That number hasn't changed. I mean, I want everybody to think about what the cost of food has been like in the last two, three to four years, you know, between inflation and other things. So I think part of that is keeping up with that cost.
Yeah, I agree.
But I, I will say this, I think for this round of vouchers, if there are folks that are watching this at home or folks that are watching it know people that are in need, I think there's several ways that they can reach out. One of them is call the Town Administrator's Office. If not, visit our friendly-faced town clerk who's really the, the face of the town when folks are coming in and asking questions, and the work that she's doing through both the Social Services Advisory Group and the work she's just doing with Neighbors in Need. Or reach out to an individual member of the board, reach out at your senior center council on aging, your veteran service officer. You know, I would say if, you know, we should probably spread this message across our employees overall of if folks turn to a town employee and say, hey, I have a need, how do we get them into the mix?
So we have the funds to-
I would say we, if, if more folks come in, I believe we have the funds.
Okay.
And I think, I think this is, I think this is as a town where we lean in.
Yeah.
I mean, this SNAP benefit is going to restore at some point again when the folks in their ivory towers get their crap together again, but in the meantime, this is where we lean in. I wouldn't put us on a path of trying to fund something we can't fund. The dollars are there, and quite honestly, many of these dollars have come in by contributions of businesses and residents and others across the town. This is, this is what I think it's made for.
No, I think it's great. I just wanted to make sure we had enough not to turn anyone away, that's all.
Sure, and I guess a few notes, so relative to Jeff's numbers, doing, you know, doing the math in my head, if it's three- the math in my head, if it's 368 or so, there's about 260K in that account. Like we can cover November and December if necessary, and hopefully the federal government reopens and they figure it out by then.
Backlog in the Mansfield Fund, too.
And there's a backlog in the Mansfield Fund as well. So, you know, we can't keep this up indefinitely, but if we can help fill that gap for now, then let's stand up and do it. The other element I would say is for people that, that are in need, that do want to reach out, their identities are held in complete confidence. It is fully confidential, and their identity is under lock and key. So I don't want anybody to ever feel uncomfortable, you know, coming forward. Like we'd much rather get the resources in your hands and no one's ever going to know about it. The other piece that I want to highlight is for people watching that are interested in making donations, relative to food pantry items, to not make those out to the town anymore. It would now go to the Middleton Food Pantry directly, and they will be, are in the process of standing up their own account to accept those donations outside of town coffers. And then I would say the last piece relative to this, I did, this is, you know, a kind of a late-breaking situation relative to SNAP, and I think the hope was that it would have been figured out and it wouldn't have gotten to this point, but we have been monitoring it. I did have a call with Jillian Smith at the Council on Aging today to talk about some of what you touched on earlier, costs of, you know, what's a way that we can discreetly compare our lists and see who you're covering that we're not and vice versa, to try to get this out to as many people as possible, because that 368 and over fire exceeds what, what we have on our list for Mansfield Fund. So trying to shake those elements out. And then also, I just want to make reference that we did meet with some representatives from the Food Pantry in my office last week to kind of talk about, in this period of transition, you know, where boundaries are, whose resources are whose. And I, and I think ultimately landed on the same place, which is the, the goal and the mission is the same, is to try to feed hungry people that live in Middleton. And whether that's by issuing a voucher once or twice a year, or stocking food on shelves, or both, they both accomplish the same goal. And so we've committed to trying to help the Food Pantry folks who are, it's largely volunteer-run, is worth mentioning by the way, trying to support them in ways that we can on the town side, trying to help, you know, take that Mansfield macho, Mansfield Fund machine that's been created over the years and rebranded under the Food Pantry flag and make sure that, that it's done in that way. And so relative to this specific change or this voucher, I did let Jillian know that it would be the preference to break it out in the way described by the chair, $100 from the Mansfield Fund as originally planned, and then supplemented from that Food Pantry Fund. We still have to get the official blessing from the Food Pantry folks. I think it'd be appropriate as a courtesy. And so we're going to follow up on that conversation. I doubt they would disagree with us that this is an important need, and if there was ever a time to step up, now is the time. So.
If I, you want? Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
So we would, we would be looking at this again for December.
Correct.
Number one.
Yep.
Number two, that, the number of the 368 that's reported by the state?
I don't know where those figures came from.
That disregard that. Besides self-reporting, I want to get to open it up now. What type of data collection is going to occur as we spoke, you know, whether it's the, you know, Social Services Committee, what type of data collection, you know, if people aren't going to self-report, you know, how do we go about making sure we're, you know, we're reaching as far as we can with numbers?
That's, I mean, I think, I think a lot of that happens every year, especially with the work we've done with the Mansfield Fund. I mean, the usual feeders into understanding who has needs. It's the library, our schools, our veteran service officer, our Council on Aging. I know we get referrals in from the Police and Fire Department.
Board of Health.
Board of Health, you know, just the work that the fire chief and his men and women did of the work of just visiting homes to make sure that they were safe. It's an opportunity to identify individuals that may have needs. I'd also recommend that we go back to our department heads and ask them to like redouble and maybe re-triple their efforts. Like, you know, when folks are visiting the Council on Aging, you know, just make a blanket statement. If anybody has some needs, feel free to come over to Jillian in confidence, or reach out in confidence, or, you know, maybe it's an email address that we set up. You know, I don't want anybody to be, not be accessing because of, you know, fear of making a request and modesty and so forth. And, you know, I harken back to during COVID where we were all focused on this. We saw it in the news every single night. People lined up in lines around the block at a food pantry to get access to food. You know, there is, as critical a need right now with SNAP benefits, that have stopped. And yes, it's only been two to three or four days, but when SNAP is your primary source of food and you're on day three, I want you to think about what an individual like that, what their pantry looks like at home. So I, I hope folks at home, and this is an opportunity for us to lean in, let's put this on our website, let's, if folks at home want to help, they can help by contributing to the Middleton Food Pantry. No longer are the dollars coming to the town of Middleton, it's the Middleton Food Pantry. If they have goods that they would like to donate, they can donate it that directly to the Food Pantry. There's information there. But I think doing that and then having our department heads continue to, you know, search for individuals that they're servicing regularly, supporting regularly, that may have needs. And sometimes it's a tough conversation to have, but if we find five or 10 more people that need help, it's worth it.
Right, right. So we need to vote, really?
Yeah, so I would take a motion on the.
I made the motion.
Oh, okay.
I seconded the vote.
Thank you, and it was seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any? That passes unanimously, and we will deal with this again leading into the December.
Yep.
Okay.
Probably the next meeting.
Next meeting, now we're already at 18.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the appointment of local building inspector Joseph Cootie. Come on up. So, Joseph, welcome to the board. Like I said earlier, this opportunity to just briefly tell us about yourself, and then we'll do our magic.
So I was a building inspector in Woburn for five years. Left there, became a site supervisor for small construction company, Seaver Construction. 1992, I got a call from City of Chelsea, was appointed the Assistant Director of Inspection Services. 1994, I became the Director of Inspection Services. I was there from 1994 to 2017. And then Charlie Baker stole Jay Ash.
Jay's a great guy.
And secretary, yeah.
I worked with Jay for years.
Yeah, so when Jay left, I started opening in the school department. So I went to the school department to be in 2017 to be the Director of Facilities and Construction. I was going to stay there till 65, January, but this, when he popped up, and I said, I guess I got to go for it.
Did you say you were 65 in January?
I will be, yes. Wow. Time's flying, I know.
I hope I look half as good at 65.
Well, not there yet.
Well, Joseph, you're coming to this with a lot of experience, which I think will be very good for us. So I appreciate your willingness to serve in this position as a local building inspector. So I don't know if folks have any questions?
Great resume.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like the opportunity. This is great.
Okay, so where do you live, Joseph?
Boxfield.
Boxfield, oh, great commute.
I lived in, I lived in Middleton for a while.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I was on Maple Street, right across from Senior Center.
Yeah.
The coffee farmhouse.
Yeah.
Next to the guy with all the balloons, and that was right there.
The one that they just did all that work to, right? Is that the house?
Uh, there's a lot of work done to it when I, when I was in. I think they did more after, yeah.
Okay, well, if there's no further questions, I would take.
Scott, have any?
Oh, yeah, Scott, do you have anything to add?
Uh, Joe, just that, you know, we're lucky to get a local inspector to come for our part-time job that has some qualifications that Joe has.
I think he's going to hit the ground running.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
I'm excited. It's good. Good opportunity.
Well, we're excited, too.
Excellent.
So this will be for an appointment through June, is this an annual appointment or three?
June 30, 28.
Okay, so June 30th, 2028.
Excellent.
I know you'll be over 65, don't worry about it.
Nice move.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any? Sounds unanimous. For purposes of, because this will be notarized, I am signing this on camera, so you will be official. And then from there, you will have to go down to see, again, our friendly-faced town clerk, Eileen, and she will swear you in. And from there, you'll be good to go.
Excellent.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, thanks for the.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Joseph will be starting December 1.
December 1. Great. Thank you, Joseph.
Thanks, I'll see you.
Okay. Okay, let's have a discussion that's even better than snow. PFAS, in the Middleton Landfill Monitoring PFAS Update, CDM Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So while they get set up and.
Yeah, you guys are welcome to come sit right here if you want at the table.
So we have, Mr.?
I'll stay here so I can flip the slides.
Sure, okay. You can stand, sit, whatever works for you.
Okay, this is fine here.
Okay.
So good evening, my name's Nick Castiglai from CDM Smith. I am the project manager for the Middleton Landfills, Middleton and Rubchinuck. We, I've been the project manager since 2020, and CDM Smith has been doing environmental landfill service since the late 1990s for both landfills.
Been doing for many years for us, yeah.
Yep. So I, I've been in touch with Justin and Paul, and they've reached out, and they asked if we could provide an update on the recent monitoring and the PFAS, you know, sampling results. So I have about eight or nine slides that will run through recent sampling results, PFAS, and sort of next steps. So probably, we've got, you know, eight or nine slides, and then we'll jump on to, you know, some questions. So.
Sure, thank you.
So with that, with the agenda, we'll go through a quick introductions, regulatory requirements for landfills, what is PFAS, sort of, you know, background slide, landfill issues relative to PFAS, potential solutions and next steps for these projects. You can see Rubchinuck landfill is, you know, northeast section of Middleton, just south of Boxford, and then the Middleton landfill is the southern end of Middleton.
Right on the edge of each, each end of the town. Maybe we should just give some of it to Peabody and the other bit to Boxford.
Yeah, Middleton is more of like the town's landfill, and Rubchinuck, as you guys may know, was a private, privately owned landfill for many, for many years, going back to 1930s.
It was capped with material from the Big Dig.
Yep, yep. So introductions, as I said, I'm Nick Castiglai, I'm a licensed professional geologist and project manager. I also have Andrew Miller here with me today, Senior Engineer and Solid Waste Expert. We also have a large project team with, with this project. We have a licensed site professional, we have many, you know, project scientists and engineers, and so we have a large team to handle all the, the issues out here at these landfills. So get a little background on CDM Smith. We're an environmental engineering firm focused on water, wastewater, solid waste, hazardous waste sites based in Boston. We've done many projects for, you know, municipal clients for all of those, you know, water treatment, solid and hazardous waste. We've capped a lot of landfills for a lot of towns, you know, going back to the 1990s all over Massachusetts, and also do the environmental monitoring services for those towns as well. So it's, like I mentioned, for Middleton, you know, going back to the mid-1990s, we did the, all the assessment work initially, doing all the sampling, putting in the monitoring wells, and then coming up with a landfill cap design and the engineering services and doing the oversight, construction. We didn't do the construction, but we did the design and oversight, went out to bid. So Middleton was capped in 1996, and then Rubchinuck was capped in, in 2001. So as I mentioned, we've been doing post-closure environmental, environmental monitoring. Actually, the same guys, Fred and Mike that you, that you met, they've been doing the monitoring since the 1990s. And then we also do annual landfill inspections. And then, so getting into regular requirements for landfills that's applicable to Middleton, so driven by Mass DEP, the solid waste regs are applicable for the landfills, active and closed landfills. So you typically, after you cap, you got to do 30 years post-closure monitoring. Mass DEP can add monitoring requirements, like additional sampling parameters. They have a standard list. Like, for example, 10 years ago, they added 1,4 dioxane, so all, all the landfills in towns had to start sampling for 1,4 dioxane. More recently, Mass DEP reached out on, to sample for PFAS at the, at the landfill monitoring wells and for the private wells. They've been kind of looking at communities that may have landfills near public water supplies or private wells. So they reached out, they, they provided a letter requiring that we sample for these, for these PFAS parameters. We started with the, the groundwater monitoring wells first at the landfill to understand what the concentrations were like, and then proceeded to sample the private wells, you know, that are, as you know, the residential areas around the landfills. So looking at the results, you have to compare it to the Mass DEP drinking water standards for PFAS, that's 20 nanograms per liter. So due to the PFAS detections at the landfill and in the private wells that entered us into the MCP process, which is essentially the environmental regulations of Massachusetts. So those require notification, assessment, and, you know, remediation of hazardous waste sites. When performing, you know, landfill monitoring, if you have exceedances, like for example, if you go sample a private well and you exceed that PFAS drinking water standard, that automatically triggers notification to DEP, like a two-hour notice to DEP. So that's what, you know, gets you into the, the MCP process. So, and that's a typical, you know, monitoring well setup when we're doing sampling the landfill.
Yes.
Yes. So what is PFAS? You guys, you know, you may have heard of PFAS. It's a group of man-made substances, thousands of compounds manufactured since the 1950s, you know, chemical companies like DuPont. Use consumer products and firefighting phones, you find it in food packaging, waterproofing materials like Gore-Tex. It's, it's in everything, really. So, so it's common for it to get into waste streams such as, you know, septic systems, landfills are a source, and also, you know, wastewater are, are, are the main, you know, sources into the waste streams. They're very persistent in the environment and the human body. They just, they don't naturally degrade easily. That's mostly due to the, it's a strong carbon and fluorine bond there that, that just doesn't, doesn't degrade naturally really on its own. So evidence that exposure can lead to adverse health effects, and that's, you know, they set forth drinking water standards as, you know, as you may have heard, you know, back in like the early, you know, or I think 2020, 2021, they made all towns kind of sample for PFAS in their, in their public water supplies. That was sort of a first step of looking into, you know, drinking water standards. And looking at, you know, landfill issues relative to PFAS, more specific to Middleton, the, so you can see Rubchinuck landfill is there, you see the yellow boundary there, that's the landfill cap, the limit of it. Same deal with Middleton, there's the yellow, the yellow is the cap. And as you guys know, there's, there's residential areas on East Street, there's residential areas to the north on Thunder Bridge Lane, same deal with Middleton, Hilldale Ave is all, you know, residential, private wells, private sewer, septic systems. So, you know, doing sampling at both landfills, we realized that we had private well exceedances of that 20 nanograms per liters in people's drinking water. So it was, I think it was five homes at Rubchinuck landfill, mostly on, on Thunder Bridge Lane, and then two homes on, at Middleton landfill on the southern end of Hilldale Ave. So that required the, the two-hour notification to DEP. We've had ongoing PFAS source assessment with continued landfill sampling. Also, we've been in contact and working with DEP very closely. Paul, you know, the DPW, ourselves, and DP all kind of working together to try to figure out what the, the sources may be, potential, like I said, sources could be a landfill, septic can be a significant source as well. And then even, you know, even by one of the landfills, there's a painting line company that, you know, they could have chemicals there, or a dog room, or that could, those could all be sources of PFAS. So we're kind of looking at that. Is it, is it landfill source? Is it a, is it a septic source? So what, you know, what comes?
Do you ever, do you ever test at a radius further out? I mean, we, we have a lot of wells in town. Obviously, we have public water, but a lot of wells. So if, if you're seeing levels like close to the landfill, do you ever take a ring or two out and test private wells there to see?
Yeah, typically what we'll do is we'll, you know, per, DEP was looking for this. They said, can you guys sample these wells specifically, these addresses? And we go sample those, and if you have exceedances, you'll go usually within 500 feet of those wells to see if they have an issue. So for example, DEP helping out, where we had exceedances on Thunder Bridge Lane, DEP went out, made contact with the homeowners, working with Tracy from the Board of Health, and they went, they went and sampled those wells on the north side of Thunder Bridge Lane, and those actually, well, those wells were actually below the drinking water standard. So that's, that's the typical process.
Yeah, okay.
So looking at what comes next, you know, we're going to continue with site assessment. We're, we're pretty much obligated to continue to PFAS sampling semi-annually. We look at potential corrective actions, evaluations. We look at potential corrective actions, evaluations, um, you know, one of the main ones being is, you know, you want to eliminate risk to human health and the environment. So the first thing we did, um, and a lot of appreciation, and then thanks to Paul for, for, you know, providing bottled water, the town providing bottled water to those affected, that's essentially eliminating the risk from, from drinking the water. And ingestion is the main, is concern there, so.
So this is nothing like radon and water, which can also have an effect, like showering and steam and so forth?
Yeah, that's still being assessed, uh, but for now, the, the primary concern is, is ingestion.
Yep.
Of the, so the drinking water standards are based on, um, so the bottled water, that's critical, that eliminates the, the, the exposure for ingestion. So they, those folks have been getting bottled water since, um, and will continue to be, you know, provided bottled water. The other, the other way to eliminate risk is a, a Poet system or a point of entry treatment system, which is essentially treats the, the water coming directly into the house, and it treats the, the, for the kitchen sink, the shower, everything.
So a system like that, is that like a two or three media, um, tank? Is that a bubble system, like what is it?
It's an add-on to like the existing, you have like a compression, compression, um, yeah, you have that, the compression system, and then it's like a, a, a carbon filter, granular active carbon to treat the water. So they actually looked, DEP was gonna actually look into, um, adding a, a Poet system to 32 Hilldale Ave, because they had some higher concentrations of PFAS. However, after doing some research, and Paul researched it too, um, they, it looks like no one was living there, so, uh, so no one was really, you know, drinking the water. And so they, they, they were gonna help out and put a Poet system in, so we, they did not do that.
When you say DEP, so, and this may be from getting ahead of your presentation, I apologize, but like, Rubchinuck landfill, that wasn't our landfill, it was a private landfill. We own it. So when you own something, you own that liability. But where is the state's liability here as it relates to around Rubchinuck? And, and I don't understand, I wasn't here then, but I don't know why we own it.
We... The, the, the state appointed a receiver of the property that was, you know, capped the landfill. And, you know, he was paid money to take the fill from the Big Dig.
I was, I was in the legislature at the time, and I got the funding for that.
And, you know, when the project was complete, you know, the receiver couldn't hold on to the land. During the receivership, the, you know, all the taxes were paid, but there was still a large outstanding tax liability. So the receiver was approached the town, said, look, I can sell it on, in the private market, or, you know, we can work out a deal. And the deal that was worked out was the town would take ownership, the receiver paid the back taxes, plus, uh, paid the town $450,000, plus created the Rubchinuck playing fields.
Boy, you sounded like a good idea at the time.
That until the PFAS, you know, became, uh, something to look for, there was no issues in us owning that. I mean, we monitored it, you know, we did the testing, just like we did with the other, but that's not a big...
Well, we're fully on the hook for any of the costs around the remediation for any of the households that are affected by this? Or does DEP have a role in this?
Yeah, that's, I mean, um, I think you, yeah, I think ultimately it's a town's property. DEP is willing to help out where they can, and they have helped out with some sampling efforts, and they can help out with, like, Poet systems, and they've stepped in here.
So DEP would pay for a Poet system?
They said that they would, yeah, they, but not, like, it was like one, you know, one property or something. But they, they, they were willing to, to jump in and help out on this one, which is greatly appreciated. So, and they're, and they're looking at sites like this all over Mass.
No, I, I know we're not the only town, not even close.
Go ahead, Andy.
A comment, um, I, I hadn't thought about your comment on Rubchinuck, but, you know, obviously, you may want to go back and look at whatever agreement was signed at the time when that property was transferred, because maybe there is something in there about environmental liability. That would certainly be helpful to the town, given the circumstances.
I would gladly taken everything that the, um, that the overseer of that property was giving, but I, I wouldn't have done it without forgiveness of liability. I mean, um, you know.
Like, like anything, there has to be deed and associated documents when it was transferred, so there may be something for council to take a look at. Um, so that's a good idea. Um, you know, as far as what DEP is doing, is they have, um, I would say they've ramped up in terms of, uh, technical personnel on PFAS. And they've made themselves available to do sampling and study. And when concentrations hit a certain point, what we call the imminent hazard, that's when they'll offer to step in and put in a Poet system. But they won't do it everywhere.
Ballpark, what's the price of a Poet system in a standard three bedroom home?
You know, I, you know, I don't know, probably, it's, it's probably 10 to 15,000, something.
Put a system in in a well that I have, not a Poet system, but a different, it's about 7,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, five to 10, yeah.
It, it's gonna depend upon all the parameters and what you need to treat. So as, as Nick said, it is a, usually it's a carbon system, and then, you know, some additional treatment, so that it works with the household.
You have to make sure the water's not hard while you're doing it and all of that.
Right, exactly. So it's always gonna be site-specific to the particular hole, based upon the quality of the well.
But, I mean, the bigger issue is bottled water's not the long-term solution here.
Right, yeah, temporary solution to eliminate risk.
And we have, if, if you're limiting it to Thunder Bridge Lane and the homes on Hilldale, it's 15 properties, which doesn't, you know, feel so bad with a Poet system. But what's a Poet system when they don't have, uh, water mains going to those locations?
Oh, it does require a lot of maintenance, um, yeah.
You know, that, that opens up the question is who owns and the responsibility on the O and M over the long term, which is probably a segue.
It's one thing to put a system in, it's another thing to maintain it, and then how long does that system last? And when that system needs to be replaced, who's back on the hook for that?
So I believe the next slide is actually potential solutions.
Sorry, I, sorry, I stole your thunder.
Took this right there, probably should have read it.
Yep, so water main mentioning there, so potential solution is, is a water main. And so back in July 2025, uh, you know, over the summer, we did submit a project evaluation form to Mass DEP on behalf of the town. So, and that's, you know, looking at use of the State Revolving Fund, uh, loan program managed by DEP, and the Clean Water Trust is for PFAS projects. They're eligible for funding 0% loan and principal forgiveness. The first step, as I just mentioned, was the project evaluation form, which we submitted.
Excuse me.
Back in, back in July.
Are we eligible for that, given, dare I say it, 3A?
Uh, I haven't seen anything come up on that just yet, but as you know, they've been tightening the, uh, noose, yeah.
So the, the SRF, right, has a town taken SRF funds before, and any water main jobs or anything?
I do not believe that.
I don't know what made you have this first thought.
So, so the State Revolving Fund has been around for decades, and, um, any community is eligible for that. That is not a, um, means-driven funding source, you know, based upon income or anything like that, socioeconomic level or anything like that.
It's not a grant.
It's not a grant, it's a loan.
But there is a forgiveness component to the, to the loan program.
Yes, especially when you have a high ranking site in and out because of PFAS. So, so the, you know, the good news in this kind of program is if the project is selected, and we don't know that yet, as Nick was gonna say, is the first thing is for us, for us to see if it comes out on the intent, when it, when the intended use plan comes out, which the state will rank all the PFAS, all the projects received. And there'll be a cutoff for funding, and we'll see if we made the cut or if we didn't. Assuming you did, the project then would be eligible for a 0% interest loan, and they have been offering principal forgiveness. You won't, you won't know what the principal forgiveness is until...
Until afterwards.
Until after, you know, when you're into it.
So Paul, we have an extended water main on River Street that now goes by that street. It, there wasn't a water main there originally, correct?
River Street got extended up to, to Kucha.
So it...
Kucha loops around and goes to DeRosa.
Yeah, so that would cover, so the neighborhood that we're talking about near the Middleton landfill.
Yes, it could, it could go downhill, Dale, Bellevue, and that area, the only issue there is it will be substantial, because there's a lot of ledge there.
Lot of ledge.
Yeah, very shallow bedrock. Yeah, you can see on the right bottom right there, that's Middleton landfill, River Street is, the blue is showing existing water main, and then red is showing proposed main extension.
And then how the water line comes down, um, PBID Street to East, correct?
Um, no, water main, there's no water main on PBID Street. The water main on East Street stops at East Meadow.
Oh, that's right, East Meadow, you're correct, because that was brought up for that development.
Correct, so that's the...
So this would have to be extended from East Meadow...
Thunder Bridge.
Down to Thunder Bridge, okay.
And we leave a stop at PBID Street for the future.
Obviously, for future need. And the, the higher concentrations that you're seeing are over near Rubchinuck, and you said there's six at Rubchinuck and one at...
There's five, there's five at Rubchinuck.
Okay.
With, with, with the private well exceedances for that 20 nanograms per liter, and then two at Middleton.
Okay, okay.
There's one, there's one on East Street, and then the rest are on Thunder Bridge Lane.
So as part of this, have you taken a back-of-the-envelope understanding of what a cost would be of extending those lines down to Thunder Bridge and extending those lines all around, you know, um, uh...
Hilldale Ave.
Bill and the other neighbors?
Yeah, as part of the, the PEF, we did, you know, come up with a cost estimate, and we do have, actually have a slide on that.
I keep stealing your thunder.
Yeah, no, it's all good. So I think the big thing was, was, you know, on this slide, the big takeaway is that having the appropriation in place, I think, it's June 30th, but I think you probably, you know, we want to have it in place in May, May 2026.
So does the, does this work similar to like a school building authority account, where we have to have funding in place, and then this grant reimburses the funding?
Yep, so I actually just went through this in Winchita, maybe three or four years ago now, we got 10, 10 million to replace a water main, and it's, um, nearly identical to MSBA. You have to put in there like magic incantation language into your warrant, read it in, the town has to commit the full amount of the project upfront, and then they'll reimburse you the difference.
So is that something that we go out and bond?
Uh, no.
Or we commit to expend?
You need to commit that you're gonna spend it, but you, you wouldn't have to physically have the money.
So, um, so it's not a case of you bond something, and then dollars come back to pay our bond like SBA?
Correct.
Okay. And this would come as a lump sum payment from State Revolving Fund?
They, they typically pay, you know, submit invoices, they pay, they reimburse, and it, it just goes along over the course of the project.
Okay, and then once the project's complete, it's paid? And then, and then we're either making a no interest payment or some type of principal reduction?
And, and we have a period of time, obviously, that you pay it back. And the SRF funds the construction cost, and the engineering services during construction, and the bidding. It does not fund design, so design would have to be borne out of town.
So the expectation would be, we would have to go to a town meeting with not just an appropriation, but also dollars for the design?
Well, that would have to come out of the water main and price fund, it'd have to be approved in an article with, um, with the budget process, so the enterprise fund.
How much is in that fund?
Right now, not a lot, after the two projects on Liberty and Essex, but, um, we did save about $100,000 on those projects by, have to pay by our paving contractor, so we get about $100,000.
You know, and on the, um, town-owned one, are we, it looks like this water line's more than you would need, just to, so it looks like as long as we're doing it, we'll do all the streets, but is, is it look like it's longer than it would need to be to solve this problem?
I think you need, I think you need... Oh, yeah, we did, yeah, I think that's sort of a buffer, uh, to include those extra streets, if, you know, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do, like, if it only be required where we have, you know, exceedances to get rid of the issue and close the site out, but, um...
One of the things we thought about with, with Paul is you're always at this stage, a little bit conservative in terms of lengths to ensure the money. And then it was a very back-of-the-envelope, quick concept layout, and so as time goes on, you know, if you're to pursue this, if this is a direction you go, and if you make the list and you wanted to do it, then we would probably sit down with the town, with Paul, and rally, really work out what the actual lengths are going to be. So I would suspect, and, you know, we were conservative, there's a lot of ledge out there, so we were conservative in the pricing, and sure, um, you know, enough funding to do the job.
Want to show us that slide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready, we're ready.
Okay.
Oh, it's me?
Yeah. All right, so, um...
Why don't we jump to the car?
Okay, let's get you up to this, and then go to the next steps, that's fine. Yep, there it is. So the water main, project cost estimates, this is, we evaluate this as part of the, the PEF. So planning level, cost estimate, including design permitting, bidding, construction, approximately nine to 9.5 million. Um, and then looking at the length of water main extension, Middleton is about a mile, and Rubchinuck was about eight tenths of a mile, and as Andy mentioned, that it could fine tune that to...
Now, you'll also notice there's eligible costs, so there's some costs that are ineligible, and that pertains to the paving.
Yeah, obviously paving, design.
Full with paving or whatever.
Yeah.
So that has to come out of pocket.
Yeah, that makes sense. What about...
So this, this is a conservative planning level estimate for the time being, that would shrink as we get closer.
What, what additional issues might we have, particularly in the Hilldale, Riverview area, where, you know, things to code and, and whatnot, and that's a narrow roadway, you know, that are we gonna be left with taking issues or anything like that? I mean, what other, what other hidden costs not to put shows, but... Are those accepted roadways?
They are accepted roadways, yeah.
Okay, well, accepted by what the standards were back then?
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, obviously the ledge issue, um, I know that also included running the water main up that tube towards the landfill, so we could have, we needed water use on the fields, it would be, this will water, not well water anymore.
Oh, yeah.
Is there an issue, let me ask this, so, like, using this well water for irrigation? Is this PFAS an issue as it is for drinking?
Right, so there's, yeah, there's two irrigation wells, one for each landfill, uh, we looked at the logs for those recently. That's, that's, I think that the, the exposure, you know, with PFAS, like I mentioned, when you mentioned with the showering, that's still all being currently assessed in the newer information. So that would, we'd probably have to look further at like a, you know, risk sort of scenario with that.
So I think there's a couple of things we have to do first. We have to dig through the pig in the poke we bought when we got this pro, uh, property over in Rubchinuck. And see, to your point, sir, if there's any, you know, language in there that holds us somewhat harmless. Secondly, and I also recommend, we have a conversation with, um, our two state reps and our state senator. Because I'd say on the other end, we did the Commonwealth a solid when this town took that landfill. In that process. And then the third point is, um, I think we have to, you know, the estimates that you've done here have been, I mean, it's helpful, I honestly was expecting it to be more. Not that I'm happy with the number, but I expect it to be more. But I think the third point is, we probably want to look at what would a design cost look like? In the meantime, I, I think we should be talking to DEP specifically about over at, near Rubchinuck, where there's five homes. I think, what's the system called again?
The Poet system, yeah.
I, I think immediately we should be leaning on DEP, that they should be on the hook for a Poet system over there, given the history of that property. This wasn't our landfill, it wasn't our property. We took ownership of this when the Commonwealth didn't know where to give the ownership to, um, which gives some runway there. I know the one property over in Hilldale is vacant.
32, probably what you're referring to.
And that's the one property that popped?
That was the one with the higher concentration.
Do the, how many, are there any others that have a concentration over the state limit?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's some, there's some, there's detections below 20, pretty much at all of them, there's not, there's no non-detects. But those are, like, the seven.
20 is the magic number?
20 is the drinking water standard currently. There's also new EPA federal drinking water standards coming out for each individual, individual PFAS compounds, such as PFO, uh, PFOs, that are down to four. individual PFAS compounds such as PFO, PFOs, that are down to four nanograms per liter, just for those compounds. So, for now, it's Massachusetts is the 20, but they also have a 90 value. That's the imminent hazard that Andy mentioned. Typically, if you're between 20 and 90, the bottled water is okay for now, but anything, if you're over 90, then they're looking to put in poets right away.
Yeah, but I would argue at least, and I don't know what the numbers were over near Robchenock, but I would argue.
Between, yeah, 20 and 90, or 20, yeah.
I would say.
Almost 75.
All the properties over near Robchenock, we should be making the argument to DEP, again, this wasn't our landfill, this wasn't our property, that this is where DEP should in the short term be leaning in. And the reason why I'm saying that is, you know, even if the course that we're going to go forward is go after sewer revolving fund, even if the stars align, I mean, there's a process here that takes time. And I assume, Paul, your guys are delivering bottled water right now?
We have a local vendor doing it.
Yeah, that's doing it. So, I mean, that's a short-term solution, for obvious reasons. So, I think we need a short-term solve. Some of that's DEP, but also I think we need to start looking at, what does it mean for design costs? Again, talk to Bruce, Brad, and.
Sally.
Yeah, Sally. And then lastly, dive through that agreement from 1996.
It was 2007.
Well, 96 is when that was capped.
No.
Middleton was 96, Robchenock was 2001.
Was that 2001?
It was later, because the town, I think, acquired it in 2007.
Yeah, but the capping happened before the town acquired it?
It did.
Yeah.
I think that long.
Because I remember I got funding for the cost associated with the capping there. I thought that was like 98 or 99.
I'll find it.
Yeah.
One more.
Yeah, I think.
It took a while to do.
The authorization to acquire that land was either in the May 2007 or May 2008 meetings, annual meetings.
Might be something in those files from those.
Let's hope.
And the agreement was reviewed by town council at that time, which.
Good luck with that. Not our current town council.
I do want to add real quick, Andrew and Nick and the CDM Smith team have been great to do, and we've been talking with DEP a lot as well. The DEP did volunteer, that he wanted a representative from DEP to come in and have a similar conversation.
Who's the person from DEP?
Usually probably Mark Fairbrother.
Mark Fairbrother is Worrell. Eric Worrell, yeah, he's regional, like, northeast director.
I've been friends with Eric since the late 80s, early 90s.
Okay, yeah.
Let's have Eric come in.
Yeah, he said he'd be more than happy to.
He was at his wedding.
Our meetings, there's a lot of players at DEP when we have the call up.
Yeah, I think we had 10, maybe a dozen DEP folks on the call last week. And they mentioned they did help out quite a bit doing some.
No, I appreciate that. How long does it, I mean, I know you had on the screen, like, the schedule on sewer revolving funds. Is that usually like two or three bite at the apple, first time you don't get it, second time you may get it, or? And are they giving more priority to, not a town that just wants to expand their access for looping purposes, are they giving more priorities to items like this?
Yeah, definitely more priority to items like this. And Eric did notice that he, you know, the DEP received the SRF, and I think he was, he did make note of that during the call last week. So they do take priority to projects like this for drinking water impacts.
In my experience, and I've been dealing with SRF projects for decades now, I, any project, what it comes in, is looked at independently, rated and ranked.
Okay.
It's, they're all rated and ranked, and wherever it falls, it falls. And then who gets funded is really a function of how much money, you know, is available, so there's a cutoff. And a lot of times that happens if the cutoff's here, all the projects above her go, and they don't all go forward. So then we get phone calls, you know, looking for projects further down the list, you know, if they're ready to go. But they're only ready to go if you have a design. So if by chance you have some money scrolled away for a design, and this is something you want to do, the sooner you get, move forward with the design and have that ready.
So I'm assuming if we were going to do something in the next town meeting, like, I assume it's almost too late for the, for the application in October of '26. I mean, our town meeting is in May.
To have design.
Yeah, to have design done, have this scoped out with, here's the amount that's approved. Obviously, we're not bonding, it's just an approval that'll be based on acceptance of the state revolving SRF fund. I mean, do you think that's?
It's tight, but not impossible.
That's what I would say. I mean, we've done it before, it is tight, but it's not impossible.
You all would be supporting us in that process, right? Like, part of what would happen is, I'm assuming we don't do this, like, you don't do this alone.
No, I would talk to CDM Smith, these guys, and ask for a rough estimate of what it would be to design or sell exactly the length, what material we're going to use and all that stuff. Then, once they told me the number, I would put it in the budget as part of the enterprise fund budget, which would have to be approved at town meeting and by Danvers. And Danvers would, I assume, be okay with something that would help get rid of PFAS, help combat PFAS.
I'm assuming there's, because the PFAS issue is, I mean, we're not the only town around that's affected by this, I get that, everybody is that has had a landfill. But I'm assuming there's a lot more pressure on the SRF loan program because of PFAS. So, like, you may not be able to answer this, but like, do we want to be looking at the '26 bidding cycle? Or the '27 bidding cycle, like, sooner than later?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, if, if, you're not, if the town isn't able to get the appropriation in place and move forward, then what we would do is you would submit the PEF again next year, and, you know, you withdraw at this time, you'd submit again next year.
But what I was meaning by that is, are there a lot of towns trying to solve with water mains that are trying to get into the SRF program, and they may not make '26, and they're focusing on '27? Are we in a better position of focusing on '26?
I think, you know, it's, times are tight. I think there's a lot of projects that are looking for funding, and, you know, if someone's got to buy a whole project that looks like it's going to be funded, it's, you know, it's going to be applied for. Excuse me. And most of the projects related to PFAS are going to be more treatment-oriented at water treatment plants than water mains such as we're proposing here.
Right, I was approached too, sorry, Justin.
No, please go.
By someone from DEP, and there's an acronym for the grant it was, you probably know it better than I am, but it was more of a socioeconomic grant, and I talked to this person, said, I don't think Middleton will qualify for that. But they told me, because that's a deal with PFAS, throw it against the wall anyway, see what sticks. So, no promises here, but.
I would say go for '26, and if it doesn't happen, we'll go for '27.
'27.
And, in terms of like that funding line, it's pretty well documented online. You can look at some of the past year's lists for the project I was involved in. We fell under it, and I didn't take no for an answer, and they ended up funding us. So, there's some movement there too sometimes. Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable waiting based upon what, you know, what it is actually talking about, yeah.
If we got the funding, what would, what is the estimated cost for the stuff that's not eligible?
The design element?
Yeah.
I mean, what would you say about a tenth of the construction cost?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I think we had.
Six hundred grand, five hundred grand?
What I just did quickly was the total cost for construction with the engineering services is about 8.2. So I just said about 10%. I said nine to nine and a half everything. So there you have it, you know, the design will be built in there. You know, another way to speed things up, if by chance Paul has, you know, a pocket of money that isn't being used, you know, we could, you could even start the survey, you know, but you could start a survey earlier, so when the design money's available.
He's got a coin jar on his desk.
But you could start the survey, you know, if there was funding available, even a small amount, you could do something like start this survey and have base plans available, so the design could start on July 1. Of course, is having to go out in the field on July 1, do all the survey, and then the design.
Water enterprise funds be used for that?
Water enterprise funds would be used for that, they have to be approved at town meeting, but our existing water budget has a significant line item in it that I could talk to these folks and say, hey, we can start doing that, 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 you know, maybe not drilling and bars and stuff, but that, that, now to cut the cost 10, 20,000 before we get going.
So, given what I think is the design, potential design cost here, we're not going to be able to go to town meeting in May for any type of approval unless we go in and say, this is approved for this much design and this much of a project. But do we have to submit by October a completed design as part of our application?
Yeah, so the way, the way that works is the appropriation has to be in place by. Did I go the wrong way?
Appropriation has to be in place by June 30th.
June 30th, and then the design and the application by October 15th. Now, there is some flexibility with that, meaning if you're, you know, 75% along.
But is June, let's say, let's say our town meeting, which is going to be May 12th this year, from May 13th through October 15th, is that enough time to get a design completed and an application completed?
Yeah, it's very tight, but we have done it, you know, we have to put the people on it. The application itself isn't what's hard, it's the actual design.
Which I think is to the point what you were saying, which is if there's some small dollars that he has in his coin jar, getting some of those smaller pieces done in advance of the appropriation in May.
Was there, Paul, was there a modest capital appropriation from last year's plan, or is that for the next facility?
Well, the only, for this specific project?
Just for PFAS?
Oh, it was 50,000 to help cover the cost of CDM doing the monitoring. Because, as Nick alluded to, every time something comes up on a result, DEP says, now you have to do this. And then these guys, the experts, they do this. So Nick will call me and say, all right, Paul, now you're going to do this, and now you don't scream at him, he'll tell me off the ledge, and then we'll take care of it.
I mean, we should realize also that it doesn't negate the environmental monitoring for the PFAS, and that continues, I mean, if you have.
We own that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just like the monitoring we're doing on the landfill overall.
And when you have water mains, you know, it's an open question, I, you know, who pays the connection fee to the homes and all that sort of business too? So, you know, it gets, there's a lot of, there would be a lot of considerations, given what this is, when it happens.
Yeah, I mean, I would argue that if someone's home is up near 90, and we're bringing a water main down, like, is the individual paying for that connection? Are we paying for the connection? Is there a grant program available to that homeowner, or is there, like? We'll cross those bridge when we get to it.
I think we'd have to pay for anyone over the 20.
I agree with you.
At 20, the limit, we pay for the connection. If you're not, and you want to hook up, you pay, like anybody else.
I mean, we've always had this discussion, especially when we've done looping, just for water turbidity and other issues, you know, and we put stubs there if anybody connects, like, should there be a connection fee, should there not be a connection fee? We've always gone back and forth on that. This is one, to your point, Jeff, like, if we're bringing, I don't know, lightning strikes, we get the SRF, and then the Commonwealth in there, magnanimity decides to forgive a portion of that principal, I would argue they should be forgiving the portion of the principal for Robchenock. You know, we should be making those connections. That line should be brought into their home and connected where their water comes in, that's.
The ones over 20-year-old?
Yeah, I agree.
What are the ramifications of that? So the town's landfill is coming upon that 30-year, you mentioned a 30-year, and that's like next year. So what, what changes at the 30-year mark?
Yes, it's close, yeah, you're close to the 30-year mark, but that's, there's nothing really set in stone. Like, I guess pretty much there's expectation that you continue monitoring, especially given now that you have these emerging contaminants with PFAS.
30 years ago, PFAS wasn't even something that was big enough, so who knows what's next.
But the other things we've been monitoring and required for 30 years, does that end at the 30-year mark, which is next year?
I expect that they would, they probably expect you to continue sampling for those parameters. You can always put in the permit to reduce sampling.
Yeah, I think the intent on that was 30-year period, revisit it, and then determine what comes next. Now, I haven't seen any formal revisitations, but the expectation has been that you continue. You know, we just have some of the first capped landfills that came up on the 30-year mark two or three years ago. One of those was a landfill we worked with in Cambridge at Deney Park, and it's just been a continuation. So all these landfills that were capped around then, they're all just coming due on the 30-year mark.
I mean, we're reaching the point where the stacks for release of methane, that those stacks may not be needed any longer, correct?
That'd be on my.
You mean the vents, the landfills? Those are, yeah, those are structures there that'll always be in place. I mean, I don't think they'll decommission or get rid of those. There's probably not much methane coming out of them, but.
I think we, we monitor that, right, what's coming out of those?
We do landfill gas monitoring, not specifically with the vents, but around the perimeter to make sure there's no offsite gas migration.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Andy, just want to go to that one slide. I think it was just next steps. So, you know, continuing MCP, your immediate, you know, response actions, the bottled water, that's ongoing. So currently, we're in a Phase 1 assessment phase. So we'll continue the PFAS sampling at both landfills, some, I know, water quality sampling with PFAS. Further source assessment, we're working closely with DEP on that. They did some of their own investigations, as I mentioned. With more data, we'll have a better idea if it's a septic source or a landfill source. So we'll continue with that assessment. And then future MCP processes, assessment, permanent solution, alternative evaluation corrective actions, kind of what we were just talking about with the water line, you know, poets or a water line. Water line will get you more, you know, a permanent solution enclosure faster and not have, you know, ongoing issues with further sampling of private wells and poet systems.
So, Paul, could I ask, I think you were here at the time, the water pressure issue on River, Riverview, Lakeview?
Yes.
We had some homes that we put pumps in.
Yeah, I wasn't here, but I've been here to replace some of those pumps.
I was going to say, so part of, that's where I was going on that. Part of that agreement was, we would be on the hook for any future if the pump goes.
Correct.
So there's a history there of, at least the town, putting in a remediation due to, whatever the water issue is for this, it was a pressure issue. You know, the pumps fix the issue, but if the pump fails, we're replacing the pump. So there's a history there that if a poet system put in, there's a history that if that system needs to be updated, it fails or whatever. Were we on the hook for maintenance of those pumps, or just?
Anytime one of those pumps shows signs of not working, we get called, and we send a plumber.
I mean, the reason why, I mean, the maintenance on a pump like that is different than a maintenance on a poet system where filters have to be changed and media may have to be, you know, replaced.
I think we've done three or four in the past two years, something like.
Yeah, typically, poet systems would require maintenance every six months or something like that, media changeup.
Yeah, media changeup, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, key takeaway is just, you know, ongoing assessment and monitoring. We have reports that we had to submit to DEP, solid waste reports. And then because we're in the MCP, we have the IRA status reports, and then we have a Phase 1 site investigation report that's upcoming in early 2026.
Okay.
So, that's it. I just wanted to say, you know, special thanks to Paul and Justin and Ashley for taking care of all the letters to the property owners. Once you, once you sample, you know, you do the private well sampling, we get to provide the results to the property owners in 30 days. So we would provide a short letter and send them over to Ashley, and she'd, you know, she'd prepare them and send them over to the property.
We love Ashley on this board.
Yeah, so appreciate, yeah, greatly appreciated. And then also Tracy over at the Board of Health, so appreciate all the support here.
Well, I appreciate the long-time partnership with CDM, now CDM Smith. I'm trying to remember the gentleman, I think he was from Wakefield for years, supported us here.
Who did the work.
Yeah. His name is escaping me right now.
Could have been a few people, I don't know.
I appreciate the long-time partnership there, so Paul's been doing a good job of preparing us for this discussion tonight.
Yeah.
That's why I softened it with some snow talk. So I think we have a plan going forward. I'd really like to see us try to capture for the timeline of, you know, the June funding deadline and the October. And, you know, one last question. So if we design this, and we go to town meeting, and town meeting says, yep, we approve this, and we go after the grant, and the grant. this, and we go after the grant, and the grant fails, the loan for twenty-six, we're not successful, and we decide we're going to go at twenty-seven or twenty-eight, how ripe is that design? Does that only last for a period of time, or will the state look at a design from twenty-six and twenty-eight?
It should be fine. I mean, we would revisit and check a few things, but it should be fine.
Obviously, cost would affect, but.
You know, this is water main, so it's more straightforward. If it was treatment, it gets a little bit more tricky.
Yeah.
You know, with COs, building codes and things of that nature, but you don't have that here.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is surplus town property status update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think to get us back on track here, I can probably breeze through six to ten, so if it's okay with the board. So, relative to surplus town properties, the only update we have there is the walkthrough at the police station went well. The deadline, which was Halloween for questions, came and went without any questions filed, so we haven't issued an addenda, and we expect proposals to come in on November twelfth.
Do we think the lack of questions is a lack of interest, or you did such a good job at the walkthrough of answering all the questions?
I think we are very well-prepared in putting our package together. So, that'll come in on the twelfth, and we'll compile all that and bring it to the board for your meeting on the eighteenth, so we're, we're right on schedule there.
When, when are responses due?
The twelfth.
Twelfth, okay.
So, if I can just cruise right along here.
Don't stop.
Number seven, Fuller Meadow School Accelerated Repair Program, ARP.
Good news.
Board Action, yep, great news. So, the project here is a step ahead of the project at Masco, so just for the sake of keeping them straight. And so, the letter we received relative to this project means that that phase in the M S B A process, they've approved the funding element, because the Tri-Town School Union leadership has been going through this for about a year and a half now. They've completed the feasibility element, and so they have a probable cost that has now been funded, so that's great news. Turning the page to number eight, the Masco Accelerated Repair Program acceptance, so a little further, or a little down, up the road, whichever direction, so they've been accepted into the program, which has now greenlit them to start the feasibility and design process. That's a huge win for the towns of Middleton, Boxer, and.
So, I hate to say it, but I told you so. And this is a perfect example of the approach that Tri-Town and Steve and the superintendent took there versus the approach at Masco. I know it's taken longer, but this has the potential of saving Boxford, Topsfield, and Middleton millions of dollars. And let me say it out loud, you are welcome, Boxford and Topsfield, for the work that the town of Middleton did on your behalf. Can I say that again? You are welcome, Boxford and Topsfield, for the work that the town of Middleton did on your behalf. I know there were several members of those boards in Boxford and Topsfield that were none too happy. I got many of the emails from selectmen, sorry, select board members in one of those towns. You are welcome.
Thank you. I share the sentiment, but we, we do have a good working relationship among those groups now. We're very much in lockstep, so we'd like to maintain that, Mr. Chair.
It's because I haven't gone to those board meetings, so, but I'm more than willing if you need me to.
But it's amazing what one phone call will do to just to recover your bases before, before a meeting, won't it, Justin?
Due diligence goes a long way, and, and, you know, credit to the administrative team over at Masco, and while it took some work, you know, to get there, they did put in the work, they put in an excellent application, and they followed through. So, I give them full credit and appreciation, and just to give people back in the envelope an idea of what this means, if it's about a seventy-million-dollar project, and say the state comes back and says they'll fund forty percent, that's a savings of almost ten million dollars per community that the state's going to pick up that we would have had to pick up. So, you know, good win, and good work from everybody there. And that brings us to public comment.
As emails go that we get today, that was, that was, that was enjoyable to see those back to back.
That was a great one, I agree.
Outstanding, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, public comment period. See, we have somebody here in the public, I don't know if you have any public comment?
I'm just waiting for thirteen.
I figured you were waiting for that, so I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any public comment. Thanks, Annie. Okay, seeing none. Next on the agenda is Thirty-Five Village Road, the forty-B project, and the project eligibility, eligibility letter from Mass Health.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mass Housing.
Mass Housing, yep.
I'm not with Mass Health, they're on my mind.
So, the most recent step that we had was the town filing a comment letter in response to the proposed project at Thirty-Five Village Road. I think our team, department heads and otherwise, did a good job of, boards and committees as well, of highlighting some of the issues and reservations that we had about that project. That site, obviously, the town had self-identified through the M B T A communities, three A zoning processes, an area that somebody could, in some capacity, build by right. It was a high-risk area, but there are certain elements that you can't do by right, and I think the project as proposed would, would need some relief. And so, we highlighted some of those issues. The biggest takeaway from the Mass Housing letter, you know, beyond outlining what we had, had kind of laid out as concerns, is their determination, in their own words, that the project appears generally eligible under the requirements of the program, subject to final review of eligibility and to final approval. Slightly vague. So, in plain terms, that means that the developer can move forward and file a plan with the Z B A. The deadline to get on the December meeting, I believe, we've marked the calendar, is November eighteenth, or somewhere where within there. I've reached out to the attorney for that group about weekly since they reached out to us over the summer, just to keep tabs and see where they're at. They're still collecting data. I think they would like to hit that deadline. I'm not, I haven't seen anything that would indicate they would.
Have they expressed any interest in discussing a lip?
I have not initiated that conversation with them.
Okay, I didn't know if they brought it to you. Okay.
So, I'm watching the clock on some of these things very closely for personal reasons, obviously, because I'm going to, I'm going to be gone for a little bit with a new addition coming to the Salzback family. So, I'm, I'm rooting for them to not file in November, because I would like it to hit in January where I'm, I'm sitting at my desk enjoying the silence of a not screaming baby. So, I'll continue to monitor, I'll let the board know as I hear things, but it was at least good to have that update for Mass Housing.
Okay. Any other questions on that topic?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the annual Town Administrator Annual Review. First, a big thank you to everybody in this board for the rating work that you did, and reading through the comments, folks were very thoughtful in the comments that they gave, and so, I'd like to kind of just walk through some of these items for folks here. I know everybody in the board is familiar with this, but I think this is a good opportunity for us to, for me, tell our town how proud we are of our town administrator, and I think this, I think this performance review reflects that. We measured Justin, the Town Administrator, on several areas, personal characteristics, professionalism, public relations and communications, both how he's communicating with the public, but also communicating with this board, select board support in relations. We measured him on his level of community leadership, as well as his organizational leadership and personnel management, financial management, as well as planning an organization, and then an overall rating. So, I'm not going to bury the lead with the overall rating yet, we'll get there, but let me talk about some of the scores. Personal characteristic, no surprise to anybody, very, very strong. I just want to talk about some of the comments that are here. Justin shows resilience in his town administrator position. He shows dedication to all boards, commission, and the taxpayers of the town. He's particularly effective in navigating unforeseen challenges, maintaining composure under pressure, and making well-reasoned decisions that balance the interests of the town and its residents. His innovative and creative approach to problem-solving allows the town to adapt and thrive in a complex and ever-changing environment. On professionalism, again, very strong here. These scores are one to five is what the range is, you know, four and high fours that are showing up in professionalism. Let me just talk about some of the comments here. The town administrator consistently demonstrates a high level of professionalism in all aspects of his work. He conducts himself with integrity, honesty, and respect in every interaction, setting a positive example for all of the staff and colleagues. His ethical approach to decision-making reinforces public trust and confidence in the town leadership. On public relations and communication, again, another solid score in the high fours. Some comments here from some board members, Justin is responsive to all in the community and tries to have a public understanding, have the public understand the decisions that are made, and always in the best interest of the town and residents who may be directly affected. He communicates proactively, ensuring that important information is shared accurately in a very timely manner across municipal, multiple platforms. His calm and professional demeanor, and I think calm is a really important piece, because you're much calmer than I am, and I appreciate that. During public meetings, media interactions, and community events reflects positively on the town and reinforces its reputation for responsive and accountable leadership. On select board support and relations, again, high fours. I think this is an area that, like all these other ones, that you really excel. You know, Justin keeps the board informed on all pertinent infant, issues. He has shown exceptional performance in supporting the board through a number of complex and high-profile matters, including the town's forty-B housing project, the planning advancement of the municipal complex, and the ongoing work surrounding the M B T A community zoning requirements from the state. In each case, he has approached challenging issues with thorough analysis, strategic thinking, and very steady leadership, helping the board navigate competing priorities, regulatory complexities, and strong community concerns with professional and clarity. Community leadership, again, high fours. Few comments here, he effectively represents the town's interests with state and federal leaders, building productive relationships, strengthens the town's position on policy matters, funding opportunities, and regional planning efforts. He's proven to be a positive and consistent in these areas, particularly with our current legal situation with the state, as well as his work with the administration, administrators and financial officers of the two communities we share a regional school with. Organizational leadership and personnel management, for me, this is an area I think you really excel, and the scores and the comments show this. He provides strong, steady, and strategic leadership across all areas of town operation, places a strong emphasis on professional development and talent growth, ensuring that employees have the opportunities to expand their skills and assume greater responsibility. Team is often a word Justin uses. In his role, he shows the respect he has for other employees, volunteers, and individuals, in an effort to not overlook anyone or take them for granted. Further, on financial management, you know, and while you are not the overall, everyday financial manager here, you set the tone, and that's very clear, again, very high-four scores about how you work closely with the select board, the finance committee, the department heads, and our CFO, Town Finance Director, to develop budgets and balance operational needs with fiscal sustainability. Through our leadership, we continue to maintain a very stable financial position. I would state you stepped into this role brand-spanking-new with a gaping deficit in a municipal complex that would have made some people blush. You rolled your sleeves up in the leadership that you brought to that, not just to the team that was already in place, but the leadership you brought to town meeting, and I would argue, put that on your back and delivered a very positive result. Planning and organization, again, high fours. He has great foresight in the needs of the town and is always thinking ahead. Thorough and regular planning session and structured communications, the town administrator ensures that all stakeholders are well-prepared and informed. Your overall rating is a four-point-six, which is outstanding, truly outstanding. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time reading some comments here, because I think this is really indicative to the work you've done. And this is an amalgamation of all the comments from board members. Justin is a true leader for the town of Middleton. He shows honesty, transparency, and dedication. We are very lucky to have him. The town administrator has consistently demonstrated exemplary leadership, strategic vision, and effective management across all areas of responsibility. His ability to unite staff around shared goals and foster a culture of high standards has significantly enhanced organizational performance. Notable strengths include his disciplined approach to financial management, marked by transparency, accountability, and prudent fiscal oversight, which has reinforced public trust and ensured that the town's stable financial position. He excels in planning and organization, proactively addressing challenges and empowering staff and stakeholders through clear communication and robust support. The town administrator's commitment to continuous improvement, collaboration, and forward-thinking stewardship has positioned the town to meet both present and future needs, delivering high-quality services and maintaining resilience in the face of change. He assumed the role of administrator at a time in which the town was undertaking one of the, if not most critical, part of its history with the construction phase of our new municipal facilities project. It's my opinion that having a manage, having to manage a community as effectively as he has under the additional responsibilities of navigating and negotiating for the town with the necessary boards and communities through two forty-B housing projects, as well as the highly contentious M B T A three A law mandated to the town, and unique employee situation and decisions, he has been strong in his time as a town administrator. Goes on to talk about your required and recognized strengths, which is a flavor through this entire response. For me, some of these comments were mine, some of them were others. This is probably, in the two towns that I've served on this board, this is probably the tenth time I've done a performance review. This is hands-down the easiest one to do, because you make it easy for me, but I think is indicative of the commitment you've made to this town. I'll ask, leave it with one point before I open to the rest of the board. We really, really left out with you, Justin. You know, the appointment of you as town administrator, every step of the way, you've proven to me that we've made the right choice, and I appreciate it how dedicated you are to the town, to the employees, to the volunteers, and ultimately to the taxpayer.
Thank you.
So, I'll open it up to others.
I agree, we're very lucky to have Justin, and it's telling when you have five members with five personalities and for all, with, with no outliers, that it's all, it's unanimously consistent, that says a lot.
And it also shows you how fortunate we are that our first choice in that search.
I wasn't going to bring that up again, Costa.
Who we had agreed to come, you two guys.
Shook his hand.
Shook hands, and then he backed out, and that was probably the best thing that happened to us.
He did us a big favor.
Yeah. And, you know, I say this in anticipation of item thirteen, because that, you know, I am hoping for the same kind of result under that.
Well, I'll say, say it again, you know, with everything that you stepped into that we had going on, you know, steady, you know, solid, and I went along for the vote for the other guy. You were my, you were my first choice. I'll just put that out there like that.
I was there, I don't remember that.
Mm-hmm. I didn't want the next guy to think, you know, I didn't like him.
Yeah.
Thanks for everything you've done, Justin, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I'll say, Justin, like, you know, a glowing report doesn't mean that there's areas that this board can improve on and you can improve on, but this is about as glowing as they get, and so, this might be a little bit embarrassing for you, and I hope it was, but you should, you should relish in it, because this is the opportunity to say thank you. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I don't take compliments well, but I'm trying to get better. And, you know, if I can just say, relative to my own performance, I'll, I'll always stress, the team beside me is a tremendous factor, and how much I appreciate, you know, the entirety of, of the. of the staff here in Middleton and the department heads in particular, who I ask a lot of, and some that I drive absolutely crazy, but they always deliver with consistency, and how much I value and appreciate that.
Justin, that's a leadership shadow, and department heads and employees do very well when they have a leader that casts that shadow. So, as much as you have a great team around you, and you absolutely do, like, realize that a lot of this is also due to you.
And I appreciate that, and I'd also, of course, worth mentioning, you know, working alongside Jackie, who clears the way on a lot of issues for me and makes my life significantly easier. I cannot think enough, and Sarah Wood, our finance director, who, you know, really puts the finances of the town on her back, and really, I think, sets the tone in terms of holding the team to a certain financial standard. And I'm always happy to lean in on that and support that charge, but I think without, you know, Jackie and Sarah, my life would be significantly more difficult, as well as, you know, the rest of our department heads, some of whom were here this evening, and others who are not. It's a tremendous group. And beyond town staff, working alongside a lot of the boards and committees as well, you know, a great part of this job is the personalities that you get to work with and sometimes navigate around when necessary, but I think some of the joys of the job is we don't all agree on everything all the time. And, you know, on occasion, there can be situations where, you know, there could be dust-ups or friction, but I appreciate with this group in particular, the amount of respect that I think we all have for each other as we navigate some of these more challenging conversations. The work that we do is not easy, and I think the decisions that we have to come to sometimes don't come easy either. And so I'm endlessly appreciative of the board that I get to serve. And then lastly, you know, for Middleton in general, getting to serve this community is really special for me, and sometimes I'm taken aback. You know, I never lived in Middleton, but I spent most of my younger years in Danvers and Salem and Peabody, and, you know, there are days driving around town around 1:14 and just thinking, as a kid, I came up here to get ice cream, and like, we play mini-golf every year in Middleton for Father's Day when I was a kid, and getting to work here and serve this town is really cool. I would get my school pants or Saint Mary's at Bob's, rest in peace. And, you know, I'd come up with my mom, and she would embarrass me to death. So, you know, getting to serve this town is really meaningful to me, and it means something to me. So, and getting to work alongside these boards and committees and this staff and the residents in this town, it really matters to me. So, receiving that feedback means a lot, I appreciate it, and it's, you know, this job, seeing Middleton succeed is personal for me. And so, you know, I appreciate everything and looking forward to another good year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Veterans Day proclamation. I know folks on this board have signed it, thank you. Costa, I know you will be in attendance there to read the proclamation, but I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation for Veterans Day.
So moved, sir.
Here's the motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, number 13 on the agenda. So, a little bit different than our last meeting. We're here to talk about an update on the library director search.
I'll defer to you, Jackie.
We'll defer to our interim library director.
Thank you, acting.
Acting interim. You're doing a great job at both.
Thank you. So, it's with great disappointment that I come to you tonight, and the trustees have already been made aware of this, and they'll be meeting on Monday. So, the, on, let's rewind. On October 20th, we put forward two candidates, two finalists, to the joint meeting of the select board and the library board of trustees for public interview. And that evening, we, the two boards, the Royal, we interviewed those two candidates and came forward with a decision to make an offer to Joanna Breen, which we did do. I met with the trustees in executive session and prepared to do a personnel contract with Ms. Breen. I met with her and the trustees back and forth while I was at my conference last week. And on Thursday evening, heard from her that she would not be coming here to Middleton and accepting our offer, unfortunately. She made the personal decision that she would be remaining up in Maine where she currently serves as the library director. With that said, we have been meeting internally. I'm going to be meeting with the trustees, as I said, next Monday, November 10th, but Justin and I have met and been working on a strategy because I think one thing, it's one thing for me to be in the library for one search, but for two, it's not fair to our very eager and enthusiastic library staff. They need a professional librarian supporting them. Our new assistant director is doing great, but she's still new, she's only a couple, I don't even think she's at the two-month mark yet, and we have some other new staff as well. So, we've been working internally on a path forward that we're going to present to you tonight. So, we're going to be posting for an interim library director again, starting tomorrow. We are not going to go through the bibliotems process this time, which is what we did last time when we searched for a candidate. So, we'll be posting that tomorrow with the hope of bringing somebody in as soon as feasible. And so, we've got more contacts in the library world now between the state and our regional consortium. I've been working with them, they've been incredible partners to me as we've done our annual reporting on our finances and circulation, and I've already reached out to the state to help me try to find an interim. And the goal of that is to give us a little bit more time. I'm going to be reviewing the job description and posting with the trustees on Monday night, but we're also heading into the holiday season, so I want to be mindful about that. We will likely still do the same process that we did before with the screening committee. I think that's a really effective way of getting community input because this position is so integral, with the intention that we're probably going to be posting a permanent position in early December with a due date of early January, once we're about a week into the New Year is the closing date. If we try to post now between Veterans Day, the Thanksgiving holiday, and then all of the additional end-of-year holidays, I think it's a really negative time of year to be in the marketplace. I also think it's really difficult to get the screening committee and the two boards together from, like, just a logistics standpoint, there's a lot of you, and with holiday parties and end-of-year things, it's just a tough time of year. And I also think we're at a point where we just want to focus on getting an interim director and to better support the team. I want to talk for a brief second about the library team. I've been working with them very directly for the past couple of months. Their enthusiasm for the Flint and for libraries is infectious. They do a really great job. We've asked a lot of them this year. They've really dug in. They've done so much for the community and so much for keeping the Flint's doors open and successful, and the books are still circulating, programs are still happening. And it's because a lot of them have put in a lot of extra hours, spent a lot of overtime, and that does not go unrecognized. I think it's really important that we publicly recognize that because they've been operating with, you know, some staffing shortages, but also without a director who is a librarian, and that's really hard, and I just want to publicly acknowledge how hard they've been working to keep everything going, and how much support I'm hoping we can show them as we continue to be in this transition. The Flint is a treasure, you know, coming up in its 135th year. It's a really big deal for the institution to find the right person. It's certainly disappointing when we had such strong support for a library director for it to not work out, but that's, you know, our operational plan moving forward, and I hope you'll join me in supporting the team over at the Flint as much as possible. And we're going to hit the ground running with interim searching.
Jackie, can I ask, I mean, the struggle with filling positions, especially of where we are today, is, I mean, the overall cost of living around here. Are we pricing the salary of this position correctly, given all of that?
I believe we are. I did knock up the hiring range when we did the reposting over the summer, but in terms of, when I look at our market viability for these positions, we look at two different categories. We look at our internal comp and class, which compares all of our department head positions. So, this position is in our department head grade. It has levels of confidentiality required as a supervisor of a pretty big team. I would say the Flint is the biggest team to be managed by a department head after police, fire, and public works. There's a whole building that that person has to deal with, which, you know, thankfully there will be some relief on that burden with our new facilities director coming on board, but you're still, it's a whole building, it's two stories. So, that's part of our internal review of the job description and its internal grading. Also looking at the market, seeing what other libraries are posting, looking at our comparable communities, but also looking at this physical marketplace of what's out there for director postings. I do think our pay is quite competitive for library directors right now. Five years ago, four years ago, before we did the really important comp and class work that this board has spent a lot of time and political capital on, we would not be. But right now, I do think that it's, the pay is in a good position. I think we've been making our benefits package more competitive, and that's super helpful as well. I just think for us right now, it's a big change for the Flint. We've had, you know, a lot of change. I think we just need to do maybe more marketing of ourselves.
So, given that the law has changed in the Commonwealth, and as of October 1st, I think it is, all job postings have to have salary included.
Salary transparency.
And I know we've always done that.
We do that anyway.
But, no, I know we've always done that, but do we have more line of sight into other positions that have been posted and filled recently in other communities?
Yes, we've, I mean, so cities and towns have been far more transparent in the private sector for a long time, and I would encourage you to go online at the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. That's the kind of the main job posting board. I'm also going to do some recruiting out of state with the American Library Association, and then we've had historic success reaching out to some of the master's degree programs. I didn't reach out to the master's degree programs this time around because we were looking for someone with more supervisory experience than, rather than someone coming right out of a degree program, but there's really no stone that we leave unturned, and we're going to, I'm really grateful that we have some more partnerships with our consortium, and I have some more relationships with folks at MBLC, and they are going to help us spread the word because they are rooting for us as well.
So, I have a question that, the elephant in the room, I guess. So, we had a screening committee, and they brought two candidates for the select board and library trustees. So, the screening committee obviously thought they were both qualified. We had one library trustee actually vote for the other finalist. Why is there no discussion of that person?
It's a great question, Jeff. So, in my experience, if it, when a vote is closer, I would have potentially considered having a joint meeting and bringing that person back in. However, because it was, it was a pretty steep eight-to-one vote, we didn't feel that there was enough support. If that's the direction that the board has tonight and the trustees have on Monday, we could certainly consider that, if that person is willing to come back in.
My personal vote was, I voted for the person that didn't take the job, but I wasn't, it was a tough decision. It wasn't, I considered both and considered voting for the other one, but it was.
So, I assert about the screening committee and obviously the full committee that voted Let me gather my thoughts here, how I want to say this. The screening committee debated whether to send more than one candidate forward, and I think the full committee decision kind of cemented where the screening committee was. So, what I will tell you is, the outcome that happened at the two committees' vote was very, very similar to the outcome that happened in screening. And some of it was fit in culture, some of it was, you know, I think, experience and ability. I mean, I'm, I still believe we made the right choice. Unfortunately, we couldn't get them to pen and paper. I personally, through the screening committee and then ultimately the second round of interviews, I think we have to reopen this search. I think we absolutely have to. I, I do not think that would be a decision that would serve the town well. And that's a tough decision to make because, A, I want Jackie back to where her full-time job is. I think the guy to your left really wants you back as well, but the reality is, is like, this is a really important position, and I appreciate the work you've done over there, Jackie. I mean, so I just spent a lot of time saying how great he is. I'll say this out loud about you, like, you're pretty swell too, Jackie, the work that you're doing over there, and the work that you did as the interim town administrator. Like, I think you've gotten the team over there and the new assistant really moving in the right direction. I think if we settled with somebody else from the screening committee choice or the final choice, would be the wrong choice for the town. And that's, it's a very hard thing to say because, you know, for me, there was a lot of daylight there. There was not, this was not a, this is kind of close. There was not, there was a tremendous amount of daylight, and I'm not taking anything away from other candidates, it just wasn't the right fit.
Jackie, you had, if I remember correctly, said that you post, repost the job in December?
The permanent job.
The permanent. If an interim were successful in finding an interim director, would it make sense to rethink that timeline, to put it off, the posting until after the holidays?
If we find an interim director, yes. If we're not, I think, I think, I'm hoping to have an updates, item on your November eight, you know, I'll see the trustees on Monday, the 10th. I will see you all again on November 18th. I'm hoping we're talking a lot at those two meetings about progress. If I, if the week of, going into the week of Thanksgiving, we don't have a good feeling about an interim, we need to post soon.
Well, I agree with that.
But I think if, if we are successful in getting an interim, who's going to dig in with us for a little while, then I don't think it would be a bad thing in terms of marketplace because I think we've now been troubled by two really bad timeframes in the sense of the first time we posted was mid-June, going into Fourth of July, going into the summer. Respectfully, statistically, people are just not applying to jobs, and now we find ourselves at the holiday season, and once again, it's that time where, like, it's a stressful time of year. It's very dark outside, which is very much affecting me amongst others. People are not adding more stress to their plate, applying for jobs. So, to your point, Costa, ideally, I would prefer to post then, but if we don't have an interim, we need to also get, like, a move on.
That's why I said if we had an interim.
Yeah, that nuance is important.
But Costa, as a library trustee, are you like-minded with Brian, that other finalist picked by the screening committee would not be a good fit or qualified?
Yes. I would not.
Okay.
You know, if we had a revote offer to that candidate, my vote would be no.
Okay.
And so, and I'm not sure, at best, it would be a five-to-four vote, so that, you know, you don't really want to do that.
Okay. And it's hard for somebody to come in with a vote like that. So, can I say something out loud? Don't shoot the messenger. If we repost this, and let's say it's after January, like, January, after January 1st, on the other side of the holiday season, like, you're back at town hall getting ready for a move to our new town hall, there's an interim over there, he or she's hitting on all cylinders. Do we need a screening committee, or do we just go directly to the board, boards and interview candidates?
Hear me out.
No, and I'm asking this because
Yeah, no, I think it's a fair question.
Because I had hoped originally that we would have gotten a lot more candidates, and I would say some of the candidates in the screening committee, on paper, may have been good, but they just weren't there yet. And, you know, and I think in the future, they will be. We probably could have had a smaller number that came to the screening committee. I don't know, we may post this in January and get 15 fabulous candidates.
And I think that's going to be my answer, is let's see how many people apply, because I would like to make a recommendation to jointly to the select board and the library board of trustees. Let's, let's, let's take it one step at a time. Let's get an interim if we can.
Yeah, no, no, I get that.
And then I think as we start to post the permanent position, see what's coming in the door. And then I think as we start to post the permanent position, see what's coming in the door. And, you know, typically, we post for about thirty days. So I'll see both of you in, in early January for meetings. And at that point, make a recommendation of, hey, this is where we are. And, you know, this is maybe, we don't, maybe don't need a screening process. Maybe we're just bringing finalists. And the thing that's great about the screening committee process that we've kind of talked about quite a lot is that if you do have a lot of candidates and you're not ready to bring less than three forward to a final interview, it's a way to maintain their confidentiality so their current employer does not know that they're looking until you get to that finalist round. And it's like a really sure thing.
But, and I appreciate that, but
But, but to your other point, if there's not enough people to make a screening committee process worth our time, and there's maybe four standouts that have the degrees, the level of experience, and we're really just having a fit conversation, maybe that's when I, if it's four or less, that's what I'm saying. Let's just go right to the public interview. If I, if I also may add one other thing, just because we're talking about a public session, the posting's going to go out tomorrow. We're looking for someone who's going to be thirty-five hours a week for the interim. It is not a part-time job. There's going to be responsibility with payroll and accounts payable, training our newer team members, really being the day-to-day operations person. The two things that the interim person will not be responsible for, which Justin and I think are very important to emphasize, are that the fiscal twenty-seven budget is already in process, and that's something that I'm working on. I've already done the ARIS financial report. It just makes sense for me to finish that. And I'll continue to advocate for the library through this budget season. It's hard to come in and be doing that as the interim. And I will also continue to work with the trustees during that transition.
Let me ask this. So I'm hoping that with us not going through biblio attempts
Biblio attempts.
And doing this directly, which, you know, is going to cost us about the same amount. However, more dollars would go to the individual than through a consulting firm, so it may be more attractive for somebody to come over as an interim. If we are not successful in finding the interim that, that you had described, somebody with experience, either being a library director or an assistant library director with the credentials. If that, because we struggled with that prior.
Yeah.
If that becomes an issue again, is there any thought of expanding that to, like, a retired town administrator?
I think that's not out of the realm of possibility. We definitely, first, the first and foremost is having someone with library experience.
And I agree, I agree, but I mean, are we
But a hundred percent, if we're not seeing responses, a retired administrator, honestly, a retired HR director.
It's exactly what I was thinking.
I don't think either of those things are a bad thing, but I, I do want to publicly state that I really want to try.
No, no, and I'm not saying let's not do that. I'm, and I'm really thinking about, like, excuse me, somebody that has strong management capabilities.
Someone who's got strong management capabilities. It's the first time that building's had a union contract, so someone who's potentially had managing of union labor experience would be really helpful. You know, Sarah and I can work with people on learning the budget and the numbers. But having someone with library experience who's ma, who have managed the different types of librarians that we have in the building with their various levels of experience. We have some really new people that are wonderful and are hitting the ground running, but they don't have that mentorship. And something that Justin and I have also talked about is seeing if there's some area library directors who will come in and be providing some mentorship as well in the building.
Okay.
And I would add, I mean, first and foremost, and it's already been said, but to reiterate, like, thank you to Jackie for keeping her hand on the wheel over there. Like, it would be an entirely different situation without Jackie's efforts. And I think where we're at today, looking for an interim versus maybe where we were at in the spring, early summer, are, are two entirely different places. And, and not to say that in the spring, the Flint was in freefall, but I think the bottom had definitely come out.
Did we have candidates for the interim last time that we, that we just didn't take or?
Sparingly, but I think it was a different situation and I think
Going into the summer, so if you had, like, say you had a retired librarian, he or she may be saying, yeah, I'd be interested in doing a three-month, four-month deal, but not over the whole summer.
They don't want to give up their summer. And I think where we're at right now is the field has been cleared. Things have been trimmed back. It's a, it's a blank slate, fresh garden bed here, and things are stable.
AD's been brought on.
Yep, there's an assistant director now. The staff that remains is extraordinarily enthusiastic and committed to staying here. I think it's just a different picture right now than what we could, you know, because we've been transparent throughout. And I think that the story that we had to tell people in, in June versus what's happening right now are, are entirely different situations. And I, I would think and hope that somebody with the experience, who is retired, who maybe doesn't want to give up their summer, but who's staring at a long winter and says, hey, there's an opportunity to, like, maybe make some travel money. Like, this might be a good thing for them. And, you know, the Flint, obviously, is, it's a town treasure. It's, it's really something tremendous physically, the, the building itself, but also the community over there. And it's extraordinarily well-supported by not only the town administration, but by, by this select board, by the library board of trustees, by the friends group and the, the community in general. And I think if we can effectively message that to people that there's really a huge opportunity here, I think that's part of it.
And it's not only on an interim basis, but for the full-time, you know, director, you know, it's a beautiful building. The, you know, the position, you know, pays well and competitively, is an active, you know, friends group that provides a lot of, you know, support. So there's lots of reasons for it to be an attractive job.
And to add to Justin's point, we're through financial reporting. The ARIS report's done, the financial report's done. Those things don't have to happen again. I mean, I've already started some things for next year because it's in my head and I just have to finish the things that I start, which is very annoying if you're Justin sometimes. But, so there's systems in place. There's going to be someone to hand off. We weren't able to get someone in time before our former directors last day. So there's going to be a handoff, whereas when we were shopping for interns in July, they were going to be getting handed off from me and I was two weeks in and it was tough.
We were still figuring out, I think, at that point.
Very much so. And so I think the, the terrain has certainly shifted. And the goal that we have right now is to find someone and to support the staff as much as we can.
That was just, you know, when you mentioned a retired, you know, administrator or HR or perhaps retired library directors that, you know, we've, we met, I don't know, that live in town. Just thinking, like, you know what I mean.
Okay. Okay.
I'll be providing this update to the trustees at their meeting on Monday. We'll have another update for you on your November eighteenth meeting, unless there's good news, and then I will be reaching out to you far sooner.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, any updates or announcements from the board? Okay, anything for you two for the board? Anything additional?
Veterans Day next Tuesday at eleven AM on the lawn of the Flint, if folks are available.
Tuesday.
Tuesday at the eleventh.
At the eleventh hour. Okay, hearing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if any, and we are adjourned.